Good evening and welcome to our city council meeting for August 24, 2021. It is 6:00 PM. I call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Ortega.
Here.
Mayor Protam Lauer.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Estes.
Here.
Councilmember Applegate.
Here.
Councilmember Geek.
Here.
Councilmember Duncan.
Here.
All seven members present.
Alrighty, with that, we'll just hopefully everyone's staying cool this week, but we'll go ahead and start in with our presentations. We have the presentation of the 2020 financial audit. Exciting. Mr. Lewis. I know it's a good thing, I mean.
Well, I think it's exciting.
Oh, I know you do.
Mayor and Council, good evening. This was the second year of our audit being prepared by Haney and Company and led by Ty Holman, who was their partner. And it was a little bit easier this year. There were some of the restrictions from the pandemic that required some, you know, quite a bit of documents going back and forth through scanners, which was a little bit more time consuming, but it was easier than the year before where everything had to be done remotely. So before I bring Ty up, I would like to recognize Shawna Dale, our deputy finance director, because she didn't have to work quite as hard at it this year, but it was still more difficult than normal. And she and her staff did an outstanding job of preparing and putting things together for the auditors. So I would just like to recognize her and give her a hand.
Yep.
And so now I'd like to introduce Ty Holman, the partner for Haney and Company. He's going to make a presentation about the audit. And while he starts his presentation, I will hand out the comprehensive annual financial report. So each of you have your own special copy. So Ty, if you would come up, please. Ty Holman.
Alright, thank you. Great to be with you this evening. As John mentioned, my name is Ty Holman, the lead audit partner on your annual financial statement audit. So this is always a great opportunity to just meet with you all and give a brief presentation on the results of the audit. And of course, more than happy to answer any questions that you all may have for me. I do have some slides I'll share with you here. I'm going to run through a few things, just quickly, audit scope, methodology, some required communications. I'll talk about some financial statement highlights and then share with you just kind of some final thoughts, general observations, comments. In terms of audit scope and methodology, so what we do, just as a quick overview of what an audit is. So an audit is, the purpose of the audit is for us to provide an opinion on the fair presentation of your financial statements. So you've got those copies there with you, and so our job is to come in and make sure that those are fairly presented and accurate. In addition, if you spend in one fiscal year more than $750,000 of federal funds, there's some additional requirements that go along with that that require us to report also on compliance with the use of those federal funds and internal controls that are around those. So there are two additional opinions that you'll find way, way in the back of that document that relate to that. We do perform a risk-based audit approach. Basically, that means that we come in, we gain an understanding of what's taken place during the year, just general processes, overall environment. And we kind of do risk ratings, and that drives what we do as auditors. We want to make sure our time is used efficiently and effectively to really look at those areas that are of greatest importance and that we tailor our audit procedures to kind of align with that. In addition to that, we try to vary our procedures from year to year, just provide an element of unpredictability in what we do. And then finally, just as a point of clarification, we don't, we do look at internal controls. We don't test internal controls necessarily around financial statement processes. However, if during our procedures we were to identify any issues with internal controls, any deficiencies, things like that, we'd be required to communicate those to you all. We do, however, provide opinions over internal controls as it relates to the use of federal funds. So I mentioned there are a couple of opinions in the back. Those include some language related to internal controls. Required communications, there are certain items we're required to communicate at the conclusion of the audit. We do provide a letter that contains all of this, but I'll just kind of run through it kind of briefly. Significant new accounting policies or changes or new items adopted. Nothing significant during 2020 to report there. Unusual transactions or items that require any type of outside consultations or anything like that. There were none during 2020's audit, or the audit of 2020. Certain items within the financial statements, certain numbers can be affected by estimation. We look at estimates closely, just because if you're estimating, that can open things up to manipulation or other issues, errors. So we do look at areas that contain significant estimates and we're required to communicate those. So those we consider to be depreciable lives of capital assets. You have a useful life on those assets. That affects how much depreciation expense is recorded annually. Also, you have pension and other post-employment benefits. Those are reported within the financial statements in terms of there's some long-term liabilities, some deferred inflows, outflows, expenses, and there's estimation that's involved and some key assumptions that are included in that based on the actuarial valuations that are performed over those. We, we're not actuaries, but we do take a look at those. We want to make sure they're reasonable, that they make sense and that they appear to be in line with what we would expect. Finally, self-insurance claims payable, there's some, there's an element of estimation there, too. We found all those to be reasonable within expectations, so no issues there. In terms of audit adjustments, occasionally during an audit, we will identify areas that require adjustment or changes in order to get to kind of the financial statements that you see there. Those that were identified during the course of our audit have been recorded and are properly reflected within the financial statements that you see there. And nothing, as I mentioned again, that we felt like rose the level of any type of a material weakness or deficiency in internal controls that would have caused those. Also, just any disagreements we might have had, any contentious matters, any significant findings, issues, we'd also be required to communicate those, and there were none. You know, I second what John said in terms of going through the audit. This year was a lot smoother. An audit's never fun, but it's always nice to be able to have great people to work with and good systems and good people in place that can help you get what you need. And everything went very smoothly in terms of that. It's a large document. I'm going to point out a few high-level items, just kind of items that I think generally are areas to kind of key in on. Sales and use tax revenues, you can see an increase in those from the prior year, which actually, you know, despite the pandemic, I think you did have a fairly significant increase in sales and use tax that was collected during the year. Fund balances, so governmental fund balances, so this is kind of equity. The ending fund balance increased to just over 16 million at the end of 2020. So fund balance over time or net position, which is also another element of equity or kind of your ending assets minus liabilities, can be an indicator of financial health. So if you see a deteriorating fund balance or net position, that can sometimes be an indicator that there are issues. You can see, again, this is only two years, but you can see an increase in those fund balances and so definitely nothing to point out there. Long-term liabilities, also just something people are always interested in seeing. At the end of 2020, there were just over 71 million in long-term liabilities, which is a decrease of a little over a million from the prior year. So just a quick overview of that. The document you have in front of you is around 130 pages, I think. So if you want more details than these, it's in there. I promise you, somewhere it's in there. But just a few high-level highlights. A few just kind of final thoughts and observations. Always like to kind of give you some forward-looking items, things that you might watch out for as, that might be coming up. Gatsby Statement 87, so the financial statements are reported under government accounting standards. So Statement Number 87 actually got pushed back to 2022, but it's a pretty big one related to leases. So there'll be some changes in the 2022 financial statements related to how leases are reported. Essentially, leases, all of them have to go on the balance sheet. They show up as an asset and a liability. So the city does have a fairly significant amount of leases that they are engaged in, and so there could be some potential changes to the financial statements and what you see there in those financial statements in 2022. So just something to keep your eyes on. I'll probably mention it again next year. General observations and comments, really, you know, in terms of us coming in as auditors, the first year, which was last year, is sometimes a difficult time, transitioning in, getting up to speed, getting through things, and then you throw in a pandemic and it makes it even more fun. So we were able to get through last year and it was, it was, it was an interesting year, but we were able to get that done. And then this year, again, as John mentioned, was much better and a very smooth process. You know, for us as auditors, as we come in, not all audits are pleasant or clean, but the audit of the city was a good one and one that we enjoy, and we enjoy the people we work with here in the city. That kind of leads me to my last comment. You can see my contact information there. As auditors, we are engaged by the city council. We don't, we don't work for the finance director. We don't work for staff. We work for you all. We're engaged by you. So if there are ever any items that you feel like are more appropriate to come directly to me, my contact information is there, and that's always an open line of communication directly to us. Obviously, we work well with John and his team, and they're great, but if that ever does arise, you can feel free to reach out to me and you can see my contact information. Alright, so a lot of words, a lot of talking. Any questions that you all might have while I'm here?
Any questions?
It is, yes. Yeah, that's an important point. So unmodified opinions on the financial statements, which is a lot of times referred to as a clean opinion.
Crack the book. I just have such confidence in our stuff that I didn't need to crack the book to know it was probably in there, so thank you.
No, I'm glad you guys came out and were able to at least get, it was a little more one-on-one this time, right? Yeah, because I know last year was a mess and just trying to, that's a lot of information to go back and forth and try to do it all virtually as much as possible as we did last year. So I appreciate the fact that you're able to come out and really kind of see firsthand what great stuff that the staff does with the money and ensuring that we're not making dumbish decisions. And so public is assured. They always say, you can work within your budget. Well, come and look at the budget. You see what we're working within and what we're doing. And having folks like you come out and take care of, making sure that we're within those standards and legal procedures and things is very helpful to us. So thank you for spending the time and helping us out.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, and staff, again, John and Shawna, I don't know how you guys do it, why you guys do it, but you know, we, we do appreciate everything because I think it keeps everybody on board, not just us, but everybody in the organization. So when we get silly comments like work within your budget or you guys have coffers and whatever that is, you guys, you guys have everything here to prove that we've done everything by the book, by the standards that is required by the state and our charter. So thank you for all your hard work. Thank you.
And a copy of the comprehensive annual financial report is on the website.
Okay, great. I was going to ask that. Yep. Okay, and if anybody wants a hard copy, can they get one? I don't know why you would, but. Yeah.
An autograph yours and give it away?
But no, thank you for everything. Okay. The hardback. Alright, we're going to go ahead and move on to citizen, no, we have no appointments tonight. We will move on to city council agenda requests and announcements. I'm going to go ahead and start with Ms. Duncan.
Good evening to everyone. I just have a few things. I'd like to extend prayers for the people of Afghanistan and our military that are, have been deployed. If we have families that are in our community, please reach out to them and let them know that we are praying for them. And if you haven't done so, I would encourage you to visit the Gateway Prayer Garden. It is a beautiful place. There is a welcome center there and everything. It's real peaceful. So please stop by, and that's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Geek?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Applegate?
Nothing tonight.
Ms. Estes?
Just a couple of big congratulations to Rosa and Sylvia for a job well done and getting your degrees. Good job. And happy anniversary to Sam.
Oh, yeah.
That's all I have.
That was a good-looking picture of you in there. And Marshall. If you read last week's paper, you'll see Sam with a lot of hair. It's kind of, it's good, so. Alright, Mayor Protam.
Well, I'm going to do my best to keep this short and sweet. And for me, it's bittersweet. In the last 10 days or so, I've had a number of professional life and personal life changes kind of collapse on me all at once. And after evaluating that, speaking with some very trusted advisors, this is going to be my last meeting. I will need to resign my position effective after the end of this meeting, unless you guys want me to leave sooner. I know some people at home that would not fault you for that or anything like that. We'll still be involved with the city as a citizen, but you know, I had some plans, some other plans that life just didn't go that way in particular. And I cannot thank you guys enough. Gave your leadership and mentorship for the last eight years. And then the seven, the way I tell the story, he worked on me for seven long years as our daughters played soccer, trying to sell me on just how glamorous the council life is. And then my first meeting, I got here a little later than I wanted to, and there was nowhere to park except way down, way down yonder or over in the library. And I said, man, what, you know, don't we get a better parking space for being on council? He's like, no, you got to get here 20 minutes earlier, pal. If you want a better spot, you ain't nothing special. And I was like, well, okay. Couldn't agree more. But thank you for your mentorship and leadership. Before I got on council, it was easy to see that council was not necessarily a group of people that got along. You set a completely different tone and really brought the city light years forward. So thank you for that.
It was all of us. Thank you.
Well, yeah, but even if we, when we said we didn't want to go that way, that was, you broke out the chairs and whips and stuff, and that was. No, you set such a great tone that it was, it was easy to follow that and all pull, pull the boat in the same direction, so to speak, or pull the, whatever metaphor you want to insert there. Sylvia, can't say thank you enough. And I know I'm going to leave a bunch of people out, so rather than get all weird and flowery and emotional, because I hate doing that in even private, let alone public. My plan is to come back to City Hall when I can get a break and then say goodbyes to people individually, if that's okay with everybody. If you want to bar me from the building, I get it, and I wouldn't blame you one bit, but. And again, some people at home might say you're well within your rights to do so. But, and occasionally I'll come up here and raise a ruckus, just to raise a ruckus. There are some people in the room that I care about more than I can say without falling apart. So hopefully you know who you are. I watched you for the last eight years plus. And to watch you grow professionally has been amazing. To see some of the changes that have happened in the last eight years, frankly, blows my mind. But my biggest goal for ever wanting to be on council was to make this a place my kids would want to come home to when they left. Because I have seen, I've driven out on the eastern plains towards Kansas a number of times for various reasons and seen little town after little town after little town that is barely a town anymore because the kids had nothing to come home for, nothing to come, they couldn't wait to get away, frankly. Probably the second they could get a bus ticket out of town or hitch a ride or leave, somehow they did. And when we fell in love with this city years and years ago, one of the first things I told my wife is, I want this to be a place our kids want to come home to. And I think I played at least a tiny little part in that happening. The only one that's not here is my son, who lives in Wisconsin. His wife would not move out of her home state. But they visit here probably more than they can afford because he wants to come home here. So out of everything that we may or may not have accomplished together, frankly, that's my proudest thing, is having five out of the six kids come home and bring grandchildren and not want to leave. So that's my favorite part, and before I fall apart, I'll just say thanks very much. And if you guys want to vote me to leave, it's okay, but I'm happy to stay. I planned on staying until the end of the meeting and then selling the pitchforks and torches out the door that you could attack me with. So that's fantastic. I know the city's going to be in great hands and we'll be keeping an eye on the election. But I know moving forward, the staff, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm making this way longer than it needs to be. I really am. But frankly, the last, the staff that you have assembled, Scott, I cannot tell you, man, the staff you have assembled is, I hear from all kinds of other places, how did he do this? How did he bring these people here? And then how does he get them to stay here? And then nobody can understand how you can be so secure as a leader that you cut this group of people loose and just they bring their best every single day. And, and holy moly, man, I mean, I know the city's in great hands. I just, I know my kids are going to continue to be happy to be home, and that's fantastic. So thank you for everything you did to make that real for me, every single one of you, especially the one who works probably 163 hours a week on stuff she knows she ain't supposed to be doing. She's doing it, but she shouldn't be the only one doing it. And thanks again, Sylvia. And I'll be dropping off cards and letters and all that stuff and saying teary-eyed goodbyes and whatnot. The good, the good news for me is I'm not going far, so I'll still be around to annoy everybody as much as I can squeeze in. Part of the professional change is my hours are going significantly up, so my free time is almost nil at this point. And that just makes it where I could not possibly continue this job and do an effective job and feel right about asking you to allow me to stay here. Thank you so much for everything over the last eight years, and I will be looking forward to seeing everybody again, maybe at the grocery store or something. And that's all for me. Are you going to yell at me?
We have.
I just want to say that it is not just the town that makes your kids come back.
Okay.
That is the family dynamic, so please give yourself credit as well because if you learned doing a good job as a father, then your kids wouldn't want to come home either. So I just wanted to say that.
Thanks. Well, and. I caught one of this on Friday, I think it was, or Thursday. I don't know. I texted him about something completely different, and then he threw the rock at me. But yeah, I've enjoyed, obviously, working with you up here and being able to stand shoulder to shoulder with our staff and not anywhere but with our staff and the community, really. We've had some rough times with the community, but if you're not having rough times, you're not growing either. So just appreciate all the time and effort that goes into this. You know, people say it's a thankless job, which it is, and we get into it knowing that. And, and we're okay with it because we know we're doing something for the greater good. And it's not about us up here, so I appreciate everything, Greg. Unfortunately, too bad we couldn't just make it out the last two months. But it is what it is, and work is more important, and solidifying your family and making sure that's our number one goal, as it is, as the young lady in the back said, so. as it is, as, as the young lady in the back said, so very important for that, and, you'll, you'll see what Tuesday nights really look like.
Maybe.
Yeah, can't wait.
He'll, he'll be the first one signed in online.
But yeah, unfortunately, you know, those things happen to us, and we just gotta deal with it and make those hard decisions, which even in the late, late stages that we're in, so. I don't know that we're gonna, I think we were saving the pitchforks for after, so you're stuck for at least a couple more hours, and we'll go from there. Okay, anything else?
No, she's got me all choked up. I'm not gonna be able to say anything without.
Alright, Ms. Thompson.
I'm sorry.
I'm not gonna try to follow that. I'll just save it for the next meeting.
Alright, I did have something, but yeah, that lost me too, but, I don't know, just remember the Labor Day Festival is coming up, and the Chamber's planning a lot of fun things, and I think we're gonna have basically a normal parade and, and event at the park. You know, the other thing I wanted to address is just what's going on with COVID. Whether you're, you're looking, you're taking it from a political stance, a science stance, or just safety of your, you and your, your own stance, you, you need to really just look at the facts and understand that, you know, there's a responsibility that each of us have to take when it comes to it. We're not gonna mandate things here. We're gonna strongly encourage, and I hope everyone takes the proper safety measures to make sure they're safe for their families, safe for their people around them. You know, I'm not here to argue with you about whether you think it's real or not, whether you think it's a conspiracy, which is frankly silly. It's, it's, you know, it's just something that we need to really take seriously and, and understand that we have a responsibility. In this day and age when people are just going after each other for, looking at things in a different light, and not accepting what the other person, or how the other person sees it, is, is, has gotten us in a really bad way lately, and I think we can be an example of how we, we accept others regardless of what it is. And you may not like what they're doing, you may not like what they believe in, that's okay, you, you can do that, but we're civil to each other. And that's what I think we've tried to work on up here, is that we're gonna be civil to each other, and respect that you have a choice in whatever you decide to do with your life. This, this hate that's really just come along, and it doesn't even matter what it's for. It's just people just hate on each other, because it's the trendy thing to do. So it's just a call out to everyone, you know, with COVID again, I don't, frankly, I don't care if you believe it, or if you don't, or what. I think you need to take it seriously enough that you're, you're making it safe for everybody else. So again, I don't know that we're looking to do anything outside of what the county health department is recommending and telling us to do. I can tell you the numbers in our county are astronomical. We're the only county, because we've chosen to stay the way we are. And so I think there's gonna be some repercussions in the future. I don't know for sure. I, I'm not a part of those meetings, but looking at trends and the way things are going, I would be, be prepared for it and watch what's happening. Again, please stay informed, make informed decisions, and not ones based off of emotion and, and whatever else, so. Just my little plug, just wanted to move that forward, because we've been getting some questions about, "Are you gonna do this?" I've gotten form letters from people, all of a sudden I'll get like 10 emails, it's the same email, but different name on there, and tell me what I shouldn't, shouldn't do. I, I can tell you I'm gonna do what's good for the community, and what's good for everybody involved, and so. I don't do them out of my benefit, I do them out of everybody's benefit, so. We'll, we'll go from there, see what happens. Okay, sorry about my voice. It's been a long, long day. We're gonna go ahead and move to public to be heard. Citizens may address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Council may not be able to provide an immediate answer, but will direct staff to follow up. Out of respect for the council and others in attendance, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes or less. I don't have any cards. Anybody would like to get up momentarily? Oh, quickly, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, County Commissioner Gonzalez didn't plan on saying anything, but with Greg making his comments, I did want to say, you know, it's been almost, what, four and a half years working with you, and then on the Fountain Creek Watershed District, a lot, a lot of great memories on there, on the work that we do every year, every, every month. Normally those meetings are held here, so thanks for being a great host, and for all the work that you do. I greatly appreciate all you've done for our community. And since I am up already here, I, I, I will say that the county commissioners today, they did vote on a taper, reset, retention for next year. They are returning $7 million for this, what was it, $2020? The 2021, which we're not sure yet, could be between 15 and 20 million dollars. The first 15 million, the, the ballot language would say 13 million would go to roads and type projects, and there's listed projects of examples, and then 2 million to parks, and that passed on a 3-2 vote, so.
And that'll be on this year's election?
So that'll be in November's ballot, so.
Oh yeah, I forgot all that was going on, so.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
I saw the preliminary list of roads.
Yeah, and those were a list of examples. They were not a specific list, but they would definitely be road projects.
So how do we get some roads in the south end of the county? Because when I looked at the preliminary list, I think we had one very minor road on it. How, is there a way to work, our staff can work with?
You can send it to me, but I would recommend sending lots of letters to all of the other commissioners, and recommending certain projects that you think are most important through, for the south, but send them to me, and I will be your advocate, as I always am.
I'm, I'm sure.
If that pass, if that were to pass, right?
I understand it, but, but if we aren't on the ballot, we won't get the money. Is that correct, if the project's not on the ballot? Because last time.
That's not correct.
That's not correct?
No, not in this one. This one was, 2017 were very specific lists. This one just lists as examples, and to my knowledge, we would not be listing specific projects. So after the fact, we continue to advocate for dollars in a fair share to others, if that were to pass. Again, I'm not gonna act as if that is.
No, I understand. I'm just making sure we all understand, okay, so it's not gonna be specific projects this time, it's gonna be a, a.
It's a total, it's an amount, yes. 13 million would go to roads, two for parks.
So how, so our staff needs to be on board with how to keep advocating for our area of the community?
Absolutely.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Alright, thank you, Commissioner. Alright. Okay, then we will go ahead and move on to our consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, will be approved with one motion. There's gonna be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or citizen requests, in which case we'll remove it at the discretion of the council. We have items A, B, C, and D. Mr. Applegate?
I'm gonna do approve the consent agendas as is.
Okay, and Ms. Duncan?
I second.
Give me a motion and second unless there's anyone that wants to pull. Please vote.
Seven yes. Motion carried.
Alright. Alright, item number nine, we have no old business, we'll move on to item number nine, new business. Nothing was taken off consent, so we'll move into item B. 9B, I'm opening a public hearing to consider the request of an application for a special events liquor permit for American Legion Post 38. Ms. Hoffman?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. As you know, in years past, the American Legion has applied for this annual fundraising special event permit to be held mainly in their parking lot, so they extend that liquor premise to their parking lot. Due to the pandemic last year, of course, they were unable to do so, so they are applying for that permit this year. And I believe that Mr. Andy Colby is in attendance, if you have any questions. That's all I have.
Okay. It is a public hearing. If council or public have questions on this. Okay, I'm seeing none. I will close the public hearing. And one more time, if council has specific questions, if not, we will, we can make a motion. Mayor Porteau?
I move to approve the special event permit liquor license application for American Legion Post 38.
Alright, and Ms. Duncan? Okay, we have a motion and second for approval. Please vote. Ms. Duncan, did you have something further?
Seven yes. Motion carried.
Alright, item 9C, Resolution Number 21-039, a resolution amending the appropriation of fiscal year 2021 budgeted funds to expend American Recovery Plan Act ARPA funds for ADA purposes. Mr. Trainer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. What you have before you with this resolution is a request for some of those ARPA funds that we've been discussing. We've had a conversation at a couple meetings about the funds coming in from the American Recovery Plan Act, and specifically the, the first 3.8 million that, that are coming into the city from those funds. In that list, on that document of, of recommended uses, was $90,000 in ARPA funds to use for ADA improvements, specifically the ADA ramp in front of 101 North Main. And so we just want to get that thing done now, and are bringing that back to the council for a formal approval, and the budget resolution to come with it. As you can see, the ARPA funds increased our overall general fund balance by 3.2 million at our last council meeting, and then that would reduce that figure by 90,000, using those for the ADA improvements. Any questions you have for me? Yeah, good question. That's something that we're gonna be working on in conjunction with the ADA improvements, improvements right on the roadway in front of the, the buildings as well. And so I know Kimberly's chomping at the bit to get that project started and going, and so we're, we're excited to get that project finally done. By the way, and I know we've had several conversations about this, but I just wanted to make sure I brought it back to you guys in a formal agenda item.
Okay. Ms. Duncan? Okay, I don't see any questions. Go ahead. Did you have a question, Jim? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Duncan.
I move to approve Resolution Number 21-039 to appropriate and expand 90,000 in ARPA funds for ADA improvements in front of 101 North Main.
Alright, Ms. Thompson? Okay, we have a motion and second for approval. Please vote.
Seven yes. Motion carried.
Alright, thank you. Item 9D, First Reading of Ordinance Number 1766, an ordinance granting Black Hills, Colorado Gas Inc., DBA Black Hills Energy, its lessies, successors, and assigns a natural gas franchise and the authority to construct, operate, maintain, and extend a natural gas distribution plant and system, and granting the right to use the streets, alleys, and other public places within the present or future corporate limits of the city of Fountain, Colorado. Mr. Johnson?
Hey, Mr. Mayor.
How you doing? Thanks.
This is, this is a request to the council. As we all know, Black Hills Energy operates a gas utility franchise within the city of Fountain, and, and as all, most of us know, we get our gas from, from Black Hills, and they've been a close partner with us for, for quite a while. The, their current franchise agreement ended recently, and they've, they've had that agreement for the last 15 years. Operated well under that agreement, and it's, it's time to, to have a new one, and so that's what we have presented for you tonight. The, the big items to note, and we've been negotiating this for, for probably since the beginning of 2020, we've been working with them to get this exactly right. And they, like as always, they've been great partners, and we've, we've relied on the expertise of outside counsel as well. Outside utilities counsel has reviewed this agreement. The expertise of Dan Blankenship has, has given input into this agreement. And so we're, we're ready to present it to you, you all. The big items of note is that it is, it's a, an agreement for 20 years, and, and basically to operate that gas franchise, the franchise fee that they pay us is 3% of their gross annual receipts. That number is, is relatively low when you look at, at other areas, but as we all know, that, that, that just gets passed directly to the, to the consumer. And so, you know, and, and if you, if you look closely at your Black Hills bill, there'll be an itemized franchise fee. And so that, 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 that is a way of, of sort of passing along to the, to the consumer. So we, as a, as a, as a city, have always kept that at 3%, and that just seems to be the right amount. But, and, and the other point, the important point of negotiation was that they'll continue to pay any permitting fees to operate and, and construct in the right of way. So many cities throughout Colorado have that wrapped into the franchise fee, but we, we insisted that that remain in effect, so they, just like any other entity that wants to construct infrastructure in the right of way, have to pay the, the permitting fees to pay for the review of those permits. So those are the big items. We, this is a unique ordinance, because it's not, it's not an agreement technically that you're proving. It's, it's actually granting a franchise by ordinance, and so it's gonna take two readings, and, and a special way of publica, of publishing it. So this, this ordinance for first reading has been published for three consecutive weeks, and then it will be published again for two consecutive weeks following tonight, if, if it passes on first reading and then a second reading. So it's a little bit different how we adopt this, but Black Hills has actually done the publication, and so they've, they've confirmed that they've done that publication, and, and so we should be ready to move forward with it, ending your vote. So I'm open to any questions you may have.
Okay, yeah, I got a few. Mr. Applegate?
Yeah. I notice this has to be for 20 years. Does that have to be for 20 years? Things can be very fluid in the things that are going on now. Could it be 10 instead of 20?
Yeah, there, there, there is no real requirement that it be 20 years. That, you know, and, and I think they would like it to be longer than 20.
Oh yeah, of course.
And so, you know, I think that's just, that's sort of the reason, the place that we landed. And part of that is, you know, obviously a lot can change in 20 years. But realistically, not a lot has changed for the gas, gas franchise from looking at the past agreement to this one. Not a lot has functionally changed or substantively changed. So we felt that just a negotiation that, that seems reasonable, but, but that is not, that is not mandated anywhere.
Well, I was thinking, considering the environment now with all the other forms of energy that are coming and everything, maybe 10 would be more appropriate.
I think, I think that's a, that's a decision that's up to council. That's, again, we can renegotiate with them if we want to insist for a, a shorter term. We can certainly, that's our prerogative to do.
Okay, Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Troy. I have a specific question on page three of what is printed out under Construction and Maintenance of Grantee's Facilities, and it talks about, Jean, I don't see the signal. Can you hear me? Okay, sorry. I have a very specific question on page three to do with the construction and maintenance of the grantee's facilities, and I've asked this question pretty much with anybody who came to us. Do you need a minute to pull it up?
No, I've, I've got to pull it up here.
Okay, so it says, "Any pavement, sidewalks, or curbing taken up and any and all of excavations made shall be done in such a manner as to cause only such inconvenience to the inhabitants of the grantor and the general public as is reasonably necessary, and repairs and replacements shall be made promptly by the grantee, leaving such properties in as good a condition as existed immediately prior to the excavation." We had a situation last year where things were not done immediately. They took months, and people had to pay for it themselves and get reimbursed by the company that we were having the difficulty with, because they had bored through sewer lines and electric lines and different things. And, and I, I know you work really, really hard to make sure that these are, you know, pretty ironclad. That became, that became an issue, because they had hired third-party people to do the work for them, and then the third-party people left town with no responsibility and left everybody kind of in the gap. So how are we gonna ensure, keep ensuring that that does not happen with these properties? Because, because I have had some issues with this when they've done some work in town, and they've, you know, torn up people's sidewalks, and they weren't quite put back in the manner they were, they were taken out of. So is this pretty ironclad, that we're gonna be able to ensure that things that are done? And I'm, give me a second, so I can switch and see you. Okay.
Yeah, I'm nodding along. And that's an excellent question, and, and a real concern that we have had, especially, especially recently with some of the contractors that have done work in the right of way. A lot of the businesses that, or, or even the contractors that have done the work do not have a franchise necessarily within the city. Black Hills is an exception, you know, Centrally Comcast is an exception. And so when they do work. And so, when they do work and all those agreements have had taken place at different times and some language is slightly different. But we always have more, more say with companies that have franchises because of this language. And so, I don't know if the example that you're thinking of was Black Hills specifically, but I...
The one I mentioned at the beginning, but there have been some in the past, yes.
And so, with this language, we can really hold them to it. And because what they're risking is their ability to operate in the city of Fountain. And so, if they, if they don't adhere to these standards and they don't fix it and they don't, you know, put it back to where it was before, then they're in risk of violation of this franchise and risk the inability to operate their business within the city. And so, there's a lot at stake for them. And so, once we can, we can sort of use that to get them to really perform really good work, even if it's a third-party contractor who's actually on the ground, that they can put pressure on their own contractor to do it. So, I know, I believe that this is, this protects us pretty well in instances like that you're referring to.
Okay, because I just, you know, to cause, it's a little vague, which I understand it needs to be a little vague. But when we get to a specific use of something, I don't want to see somebody, they tear up their sidewalk on Friday afternoon and then they don't come back till Wednesday or Thursday, you know? So, any more as specific as we can get. I know things happen, you know, rain happens, snow happens, whatever. But sometimes it just seems a really long time that things are blocked up. And if you're not the one being inconvenienced just to try to get into your house daily, it's not necessarily priorities. Okay, I just want to make sure we're being as good about that as we can. Thank you.
I think it would also really depend on our side of things as far as inspecting and ensuring they're doing what they were supposed to do.
Yeah, and that's certainly a part of it, you know, sometimes the projects can drag on because we need to verify that it is done right. So, that's kind of the piece of it as well, that we're going to make sure that, you know, that when they patch it up, that it's not going to fail immediately. And that's what our staff is out there inspecting and making sure and holding them to the standards.
Okay. Mr. Applegate?
Yeah, is there any way that we could get them to run that by us when they pick their contractor?
To run, like who could it be?
Who it is, yes.
You know, I don't, I guess it's hard to sort of force them to control what contractor they use. What we can control is the quality of the work.
Okay, yeah, I see.
So, you know, if, you know, there's, you know, a certain engineer that we know doesn't do great work or something like that, you know, we can advise them and say, hey, we know that this work isn't going to be up to our standards. But it's up to them to pick their own contractor.
But if they didn't live up to it, it would be quite a procedure. If they needed to be replaced, that would be unbelievable.
Right, and it would be their cost. So, they've got some financial incentives to pick the right contractor. Because if they do it wrong, they're going to have to do it all over again.
Okay, could you make them bond for it before they start? Because making them bond, then we could figure out and finish it and use their bond?
Yep, and that's a practice.
Okay, is that what we do? Okay, okay.
Ms. Thompson?
One last question. When a problem does occur and they have to come back and redo it or they have to reimburse the property owner for damage, you know, that they had to pay for? Because you can't go without a sewer for months. Do we get staff time reimbursed for that? Because I know in this one particular one, I'm kind of harping on right now, I know the staff person had to spend a considerable amount of time getting them to come back to the table and reimburse the people for their properties.
That's a great question. I don't believe that that's a practice right now. And what I would tell you is that's part, that's kind of wrapped up in the permit fee. And so, but, you know, in a situation that you're talking about, that's, they're going to use well more than what their permit fee is if they're causing problems. So, you know, I don't think we've thought or considered about that, about actually charging them for staff time. Because for the most part, it's wrapped up into that. If nothing goes wrong, you know, that permit fee pays for staff time. So, we could certainly consider that and implement that administratively. Because, because, and that's, again, why we keep it a little bit vague because, you know, they're going to, in this franchise, they're agreeing to pay the kind of fees and permits and everything that it costs to do that work. And so, we could, it may just administratively start charging for staff time beyond what the permit fee provides for.
On that, though, I mean, that's why we have the staff people to work on those issues, even if it's an emergency where, to me, it sounds like we're just haggling over. I mean, if I'm hired to do my job and I've got to spend extra time over here, I don't, it's part of the, it's part of it, right?
I guess the flip side would be, that's kind of the cost of the business is really...
Right, I mean... Yeah, I don't want to, and not that this is going to do that, but I think things like adding or taking away years or... I guess that's my question, you know, based on Mr. Applegate's, you know, question of, what if we ask them for 10? What is that going to do? I mean, are they going to completely throw their hands up and, you know, you know, what is that?
Yeah, I think, you know, the representatives from Black Hills, I don't think are present today. But I think they would tell you that, you know, the expenses, they get it as a pass-through expense. So, I don't know, I'm not exactly sure about if we change the time period. But if we start charging for staff time, I mean, they're just going to pass that through to the customer. And so, at a certain point, you know, our citizens are going to be paying for it anyways. And so, you know, and I don't know what that would affect if, you know, if they're able to plan for 20 versus 10, what that would affect on rates. But that's certainly an area that we could...
Okay, Scott?
I was only wanting time charged if there was an issue and it took a large amount of staff time to resolve it. Not in general. Just want to make sure you understand that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the reasons that these franchise agreements, these franchise ordinances are structured the way they are, they're structured as kind of a umbrella type of agreement, knowing that for some of the very reasons that have been brought up here, a lot of time will go by in the span of these kind of agreements. And so, we have a lot of other ordinances that are in place, our permit fees, our permit requirements, our general construction standards, our bonding requirements, our performance bonds, those sorts of things. Those are a lot of the, kind of the minutia detail that get them put in place that change over time. As we, as we grow and as we learn, as technologies change and practices change, those are really easy things, those standards are easy things for us to update without having to reopen the entire franchise agreement. So, that's why you won't see a lot of that minutia inside the agreement. You'll get the broad language about they have to comply with permitting requirements, et cetera. But we don't get to those details because we know that we constantly are hearing great ideas from others that we will beg, borrow and steal from. And we develop our own practice as we go and we realize some things work and some things don't. So, those other standards are really easy to change. So, if we find that we start having a number of issues with poor-performing contractors, and we had a span over the last couple of years with one particular service provider and their subs, where it was creating some major brain damage. That's probably the only serious, I mean, that I can recall, the serious timeframe in the last 14 years that I can think of where it really became a problem. But that would be the kind of thing, that if we saw that being a consistent problem, we would definitely want to be exploring, hey, how do we address that? And not only that, how do other cities address it? You know, because there's got to be other people who've thought of creative ways to handle that as well. But just kind of remember that, there's a lot of minutia that we can really tweak periodically without having to even touch this agreement.
Well, and I would, I would assume on the flip side, the franchisee's going to want to stay ahead of those as well. Because it's going to affect them not only here, but there are other franchises that they have going on. And so, it's this working back and forth type of thing to ensure those. And if they, if they want to continue the franchise, they're going to hopefully have these safe stops in their own work as well to keep themselves ahead of the game. But like you said, something happens and, but, you know, I think we're good with a good provider, at least for our city and what they do. Because outside of gas, they, they've put in a lot of, they're at events. They donate money, they do all those things and are part of the community. So, that's one of the things I really like about Black Hills and what they do for our community. So, any other questions from council at this point? Any questions from public?
Gordon Rick, question for Mr. Blankenship. I believe, sir, we have several other contracts with energy providers. I believe there's a company in Texas, I believe we have a contract with some people in Pablo to provide us with power from the reservoir. I believe we have some solar contracts. With regards to Councilmember Applegate's question about the contract, like the franchise agreement, how does that compare to the other agreements that we have with the other energy providers?
We have, what you're talking about is purchase agreements. And so, there are various, various lengths, but they, the XL Energy, also known as Public Service Company of Colorado, that was assigned to them from Twin Eagle. And I think the entire contract on that was probably in the 20-year magnitude. And certainly, the one, the new power supply agreement is approximately a 20-year agreement also.
Ms. Smith, you're good.
Jean Smith, Whitefield. My understanding is that you are considering giving a franchise to Black Hills Energy to build a plant? Is that correct? Distribution center?
No.
No?
Just to provide electric, or, sorry, gas service in the city.
They're already doing it.
Okay, so it would be piped in?
It's already in. It's structured? It's already here.
Oh.
It's just extending the franchise.
It's not in my backyard.
No, it's just, they're just extending the franchise we already have.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that clarification. When you're talking about a plant, I wanted to...
Renewing, renewing the franchise.
Where it's going to be.
No.
It is, and I, so I just saw that in the wording. That basically, in order to grant them the authority to operate the entire system, but they don't have any gas distribution plant. It's really just the gas infrastructure system.
Okay, thank you. It does look like...
It does when you read it.
All right. Okay, moving on. Any, if we're good with it, council, Mayor Proton?
I just wanted to move to approve ordinance 1766 on first reading.
And Mr. Applegate?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval. Please vote.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right, thank you, Ms. Huffman. All right, we are going to, let's see, it's seven. Let's take a, are we okay with like a four-minute break for you guys to get set up? And we'll, okay, we'll take a four-minute break. Let's take a, are we okay with like a four-minute break for you guys to get set up and we'll, okay, we'll take a four-minute break?
Okay.
All right, thanks for that. We're gonna move into, um, item number nine E. It's presentation one of three of the Water Master Plan update. Ms. Helm, come on up.
Fixed now.
Yeah.
Yeah, can you hear me? I wish it was broken, that's a little loud for me.
Oh, I, no, it's not.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, my name's Katie Helm. I manage the Conservation and Sustainability Programs for the city. I'm presenting on the wa- the Water Master Plan and at the end of this, you'll have a clear understanding of what the Water Master Plan is, why it's important, how it works. Um, this is the first of three presentations, as mentioned earlier. So, a lot of information that we're gonna go over in the next several minutes. We wanna keep you informed as we go through the process. So, I'll jump right in. What is the Water Master Plan? This is not something new, but something that we do periodically. It's a comprehensive assessment of supply, treatment, storage, demand, distribution, and maintenance of our system. This document identifies and prioritizes our critical needs and determines how we can proactively address those needs. The master plan is a projection of growth of our entire system, and that's driven by the increase in water demand, which I'm gonna talk about a lot as we move forward. It is directional and not decisional, that's very important. And what I mean by that is that there will not, there will be many decisions, including budgetary and policy decisions, that will be presented after the plan is adopted and implementation has begun, but those will come later. So again, this is directional, not decisional. Why do we have the Water Master Plan? We have this so that we can continue to provide our customers with high-quality, reliable, and cost-effective water as efficiently as possible, to accommodate growing water demand without adverse effect to our existing customers. How are we developing the plan? During the development of this plan, we utilize internal and external consultants to perform research, assess data, reference case studies, and collaborate to determine appropriate scenarios for pursuit. We have experts that can speak to water rights, water supply resources, perform demand and delivery projections, and quality assurance. So those are our external consultants that I mentioned earlier. Internally, we collaborate with a lot of departments, include the plan, including the Planning Division, Economic Development, the Urban Renewal Authority, Customer Service, Finance, Conservation, and Tech Services. The reason I'm listing those involved is because I really wanna demonstrate that we're bringing all of the appropriate individuals to the table as we go through this process to create a really informed plan. Timeline, as mentioned earlier, this is one of three presentations. The second one will be at the September twenty-eight council meeting, and the third one will be on October twelve. The second one, we're going to present our major findings and deliverables and also gather feedback from you. Aside from this, following adoption, we are going to provide updates to you as we implement the plan. Execution of initiatives are driven by demand, not a timeline, and this means that the timelines for the report out are gonna be a little variable. As we review the timeline, I also wanna explain that we're doing this right now because Fountain has experienced a lot of change since the last plan was published in two thousand and seven. Just to give you an idea, it was about a hundred and fifty pages, that's why we're doing three presentations, so that we don't overwhelm you with information. So like I said, we've experienced a lot of change, many of those foundational items, foundational elements, conclusions and directions from which this plan was built have since changed. Some of those include our water rights portfolio, it's now much more diverse and resilient. We are now operating water treatment facilities, and will be operating more in the near future, and that was a result of the PFCs detected under our groundwater in two thousand and sixteen. I'll talk more about those treatment facilities later on. The demand management efforts for the Colorado River are increasingly important. For those of you that aren't following what's happening with the Colorado River, we import a large amount of water from the Colorado Basin to meet our supply needs. The Colorado River is currently stressed due to drought, high temperatures, and increased water demand. We're experiencing historically low water levels in Lake Powell and Lake Mead from drawing on the supply. So this means poor water quality for the basin, it's a risk to invasive species, and it's presenting challenges in meeting our water needs. Lastly, there's a continued pressure for land development. I also wanna give you an understanding of some of the initiatives we achieved in the last Water Master Plan, and those include participation in the Southern Delivery System, which I'll refer to as SDS moving forward, improvements to our infrastructure, increased our water rights portfolio, which I mentioned earlier, and we've also implemented numerous water conservation programs. Okay, moving forward. To help give you an understanding of what's considered during the Water Master Plan draft process, I wanna review some key components to our system. And of those, I'm going to talk about our developed water service area, undeveloped service area, raw water storage, finished water storage, delivery systems, treatment plants, and wells. And if any of those don't make sense to you, I'm gonna talk about it moving forward. Can we pan to the map? There are many details considered when we develop, oh, yes, I'm on the right page. Okay, there are many details considered when we develop the Water Master Plan, but the key foundational items on which the plan is built are water demand, water supply, and that includes sources and storage, and also water delivery. So when we talk about water demand, the master plan is going to detail projections that anticipate the increase in water use, which is triggered by new development, so the new residential properties and businesses that are coming into the area, redevelopment, and continued conservation efforts. So looking at the map, yellow was outlining our city limits. Can you enable the distribution system layer? The blue lines that you're seeing here is our current developed water service area. So that's our baseline as we create the master plan. We use this to determine our current average water demand and how this demand is going to change as the city grows. So that's everywhere that we're currently delivering water to customers within the city limits. Can you enable the water service area? So as you see by the orange opaque layer that was just overlaid within the city limits, that's our undeveloped water service area. So this demonstrates where we have potential to grow and offer water services. I'd like everyone to consider that our annual average water demand is about three thousand acre feet. So for those of you that aren't familiar with an acre foot, that's about three hundred and twenty-five thousand eight hundred and fifty-one gallons, if that puts it into perspective. A Fountain single-family household uses an average of three hundred gallons a day, and that peaks to about nine hundred gallons during the summer, because that's when people are irrigating, kids are home for the summer, maybe they're doing more work outside. So again, that's three hundred gallons a day for the average single-family household in Fountain, peaks to nine hundred during the summer. We need to design our delivery systems to plan for increases in peak. Can you turn off the distribution system layer? Thanks. Next, I'm gonna talk about our water supply sources, so I'm referring to surface and groundwater. Fountain receives its water supply from, mainly from snowmelt in the Rocky Mountains, and then also irrigation ditch diversions. As more water is required to meet demand, we may need more storage capacity. Can you zoom out so we can see Pueblo, thanks? It's pretty far south. A majority of our raw water storage is maintained in Pueblo Reservoir. For those of you, yeah, thank you. Sorry, skip that. So Pueblo Reservoir is outlined in the neon green line just south of the city. So a majority of our raw water storage is in Pueblo Reservoir. For those of you that don't know, raw water is just untreated water, not yet ready to drink. During the planning process, we're going to assess our water supply to ensure that we have enough to meet our future needs. This includes considering redundancy to our system to reduce our reliance on the FBA pipeline, so the Fountain Valley Authority Pipeline. And with that, I'm gonna segue to water delivery. Can you enable the SDS Pipeline and the FBA Pipeline? Okay, the SDS Pipeline is on the right, and that is in orange, and then the FBA Pipeline is left in the fuchsia color. These are delivery systems that bring water to our community. We need to design our delivery system to plan for increases in peak, which I mentioned earlier. The plan is going to explore improvements necessary to our water infrastructure so that we can accommodate new customers as that vacant land develops, which again was demonstrated by that orange opaque outline within the city limits. Water infrastructure includes piping, valves, hydrants, pumping stations, pressure-regulating structures, water treatment, finished water storage, and water metering. The information developed in this section is going to be used to create a capital improvements plan, which will likely include redundancy to our supply lines, which again are demonstrated by the pink and orange lines here. Um, can you turn on the Southwest Gold Field Tanks layer and zoom back into this, zoom back into the city? Okay, so you'll notice our storage tanks are the neon green dots that you see at the northern and southern end of the city. These tanks symbolize our finished water storage. So finished water storage is water that has been treated and it's ready to drink. At the north end of the city, that is the Gold Field Tank, and at the south end, that's the Southwest Tank. An increase in demand could trigger the need for additional finished water storage. Can you turn on the GAC and ion plants layer? Okay, uh, can you zoom in a little bit? So there are three stars on the map, you're gonna see two kind of central, and then one that's just south of the city. Earlier, I mentioned that the city has added its own water treatment plant since the last Water Master Plan was published. So we have two granulated activated carbon plants. Those are at Aga Park and near the library, so those are gonna be the north and central stars that you see there. And then we also have an ion exchange plant that's under construction, which is overlaid by that top star. They're so close to each other that it just looks like a single one, but there's two plants present at Aga Park, not yet operating for the ion exchange. And then the FBA Treatment Plant, we have a share in that, so that's included on the south end of the city by that last star at the bottom. Annual demand drives treatment plant capacity needs, so we may require more in the future. You can remove that layer. Thanks. Um, can you turn on the wells one, two, three, four layer? So earlier, I mentioned that we rely on surface and groundwater to meet our supply needs, and wells draw our groundwater. We have four wells. The fourth one is not currently in operation, that one's located at the northwest of Dale Street and Linda Vista Drive. Wellhouse one and two are at Aga Park, and then Wellhouse three is close to the library. Now that you've had a high-level overview of our infrastructure, consider what we've reviewed, demand, supply, and delivery. Execution of initiatives is dependent upon many variables, which are largely driven by demand. And we can shift back to the PowerPoint. Can you pan to the next, or no, it's me. It's me, never mind, you're done. Okay. All right, um, I wanted to talk about the alignment that this plan has with city and regional goals. This plan coincides with the plans I have listed here. All of these are recognizing that we're part of a greater whole and a larger picture. The master plan is not just complementary to these strategic plans, but it's congruent with them. So of those, the Water Efficiency Plan, the Comprehensive Development Plan, Colorado Water Plan, El Paso County Water Master Plan, and Arkansas Basin Implementation Plan. So next steps, I mentioned that this is one of three meetings. We will be at the September twenty-eight council meeting, where we will report major findings and deliverables, uh, recommended approaches based on current knowns and projections, and also gather feedback from you, which we'd like at this meeting, future meetings, and then also whatever method, email. October twelfth, we will present at that council meeting as well, a draft document. And then I also, I, I mentioned earlier, this document is policy-driven. The Water Master Plan is going to suggest developing additional policies or revising pre-existing policy to implement some parts of the plan. I just wanna reiterate that any potential policy changes that arise are gonna be taken to council as normal. And again, opportunity to gather feedback on additional policy recommendations can occur at the next meeting. With that, I'm gonna open it up for questions and comments.
I think council, public need to really take note of what, what's going on here for a lot of reasons, but I, you know, the big one is, you know, we're heavily tied to Colorado River and, and that whole system, and it's in, almost disrepair. Um, and it's not something that's gonna be fixed by a heavy snow year. It's, it's, uh, it is drastic, it is not in a good way right now, and it's gonna affect us, um, big time. So, um, we, as a community and a region, um, have responsibilities towards the Colorado River uh, to, to ensure that, um, those two reservoirs that you had mentioned earlier are, um, we can get them filling up again, but that's gonna take forever. The, the little stopgap they've done this year really isn't gonna provide a whole lot of relief. It's, uh, a lot of it's gonna evaporate, a lot of it's gonna seep. Um, so they're kind of, not even a really good Band-Aid they're putting. If you remember back in the old days, in the eighties, when Chris and I grew up, they had those little tiny Band-Aids, and you were kind of excited to use them when something, that's basically what we're using now to, to maybe fix this situation. So, um, you know, it's just, it's important that we get ourselves straight and not wait another fifteen years or however long it was for this one. But, uh, we need to be, you know, cutting edge as well as our thinking in what is gonna happen with water, because, the drought, we may have had a little bit of relief here, but the further west you go, the further southwest you go, it's, it's drastic, and they're using up water like it's nothing, like it's, it's free. So, you know, they don't, uh, yeah, so there's a lot of these dominoes that are, that are occurring that, uh, we need to be really on our game when, when we complete this and, and finish it up. And I know you guys have been working super hard on this and, and moving it forward, so, you know, I just really implore, uh, council and citizens to, to really take heed and look at this, because it's gonna affect us, um, what's going on with this drought and, and, and how it, how far behind we've gotten, I think. And so, um, I think we've done some great things with voluntary water restrictions, those types of things to help our water, uh, portfolio, but, you know, we had water contamination, we have all these things, and then we have growth on top of all of that. And, you know, developers wanted it just to start plopping house after house down. Um, we have a certain amount of water, but we don't have enough to, to, you know, help this future growth and whatever's coming. So just a lot of work needs to be, um, taken pretty seriously when it comes to this, so, um, kind of comments more than questions, but I, I get a lot of this at, at, uh, in my personal life, so, Mr. Geek?
Yes, I was wondering, whenever you're developing your plan here, are you, kind, I mean, is the county part of that?
We do collaborate with the county and some of our neighboring utility providers, just to stay informed and keep them informed as well, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, because I think it's important that if we're gonna try and do the right thing, that the people that are impacting us are doing the right thing too.
Yes, exactly, and that speaks a little bit to the strategic plans that we're working concurrently with, but yes, we're maintaining connectivity with all of the stakeholders in the area, including the county.
Thank you.
Yeah, you raise a good point. Others? Danny, did you have anything?
Yes, yeah, yes, Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to, to make a couple of points, um, to, or to emphasize a couple of points. Uh, what we're, what the approach that we're taking is, and I think it's really important, and it's part of our, our purpose, is that, uh, this plan is, is intended to, uh, give us the information that we need to accommodate growth without adversely affecting our existing customers. We have a very, you know, uh, strong commitment to our existing customers and continuing to, to meet their needs. We're currently able to meet the existing customers' needs, and so that's something that's, uh, uh, front and center as we work, uh, through that, is, is to protect those, uh, the, the, the existing customers. And, and secondly, this is, uh, what we're taking is what I call a build-out approach. We're looking at not just, you know, what we expect to happen over the next five years, or ten years, or twenty years. We're looking at what is it gonna take for us to build out our entire service area? Uh, we don't control the timing of what, how, when growth will occur, but we need to know what it's going to take to provide services to our, yeah, entire, uh, service area. And, and as Katie indicated, there's multiple components to our water delivery system. And at this point in time, we don't have balance. That means, uh, you know, each component doesn't deliver the exact same amount. We focused on certain components in the past, and in fact, we're, we're doing really well from a water rights perspective. However, we're not doing as well, and we're constrained with, uh, treated water capacity. And so we're gonna look at each one of those components and figure out what it's gonna take to kind of balance those out and to ta- see what it's gonna take, what gap we need to bridge, uh, in order to give us the resources that we need to, uh, to ultimately build out, build out the system. So I think that those are two, two points that, uh, that, that I just wanted to emphasize. And, and as also as Katie noted, you know, at our next meeting, we're gonna really come back with some nuts and bolts, um, to, to talk about and, and talk about some of those, you know, what are our existing capacities today? What are, what are we gonna need to, to meet the build-out demands? And so what do those gaps look like, and how do we start, uh, looking at strategies to fill those gaps?
I, I think that's an important point, and I think a lot that got, that message got lost once the information got out. And I know you were doing your best to, to make sure that was what was coming out, but I was getting asked, like, you guys just completely stopped growth because you don't have water. And that's absolutely not the truth. But, you know, that, that, you, and, and I'm glad you also said that, at least this council, and I'm hoping future councils, stay along the lines of we're gonna protect our existing customers. And, and we need to make sure we have enough water for them, a number one, top of the list. Um, and then, second, we're gonna, our new customers, um, how do they pay for that and, and their own growth? And that's, it's been kind of the mantra that since I've started running for office of, you know, we're gonna make growth pay its way, and that's, that's the way we do it. But again, it, it really takes this, the, um, the fortitude up here to say, you know what? And trust our staff and allow staff to have that, um, that stand, so that we can, again, protect our ratepayers um, and, and ensure that we have everything we need in place to be able to provide for all the new ratepayers. You know, growth comes with a lot of issues, um, and we wanna make sure we're not burdening our current ratepayers uh, as much as possible. I mean, there, everyone's gotta sacrifice a little bit every now and then, but, uh, um, you know, eh, not at the, not at the behest of the.
Yeah, and that's exactly how we're structuring the plan. Um, we're, we're looking at, uh, really two scenarios. The first scenario is what, what does it take to sustain our existing customer base? What types of improvements do we need to make over time to make sure that we continue to maintain and operate their system? Because those costs would be allocated to the, those existing customers. And then the second scenario is what does it take to build out? And are those, you know, expand the system to serve new customers? And, and our approach is that those costs would be allocated to those new customers. And, and how we've, how we ultimately finance and build those improvements, uh, out on the backs of those new customers is. And, and how we've, how we ultimately finance and build those improvements, uh, out on the backs of those new customers is, is, is going to be a challenge.
Right. Okay. All right. Any other questions from council? So we expect you back on the twenty eighth and the twelfth. Okay. Um, is there anywhere where, where we can see more of the information prior, so we, in case we want to build cou- uh, questions up or anything?
We will, we will go ahead and, uh, um, at least, uh, probably try to at least a week if not longer, uh, further out to get you some information. So that you'll have an opportunity to look at that and start to digest it, and, uh, so we won't just be unfolding it here at the, at the meeting. But we'll do that for you.
Okay, any other questions? Quickly.
Gordon Rick, two quick questions. Uh, you talked about the Ion Exchange Plant in Aga Park. When is that going to come online? It's my understanding from previous conversations, that can produce about a million and a half to two million gallons a day. Secondly, uh, regarding SDS, is SDS actually connected to our system? Are we getting water from SDS? I know we paid for it.
Yeah.
But that, that's.
Yes, on SDS, and I don't know the answer to, uh.
Yeah, on the, on the Aga Treatment Plant, uh, it is still, uh, still under construction. Uh, the, the actual contract with the Corps, I believe, goes into twenty twenty-three. Uh, they are working on modifications to the plant, uh, that at this point in time, they've indicated that, uh, uh, because of back, back orders and back, uh, unavailability of materials, that they're looking closer to, uh, uh, the end of this, uh, calendar year. Uh, the, we have some concerns. Uh, we don't want to fire the plant up, uh, in the, in the middle of winter. We, we don't necessarily need it to meet our demand in the middle of winter. Uh, so we're working with, uh, the Corps and the Air Force, uh, to probably look at commissioning that, uh, sometime next spring, provided that they're ready to do that. Uh, we have, uh, we've even traveled to, to Washington DC recently to, to meet with, uh, the Air Force, uh, about extending our Environmental Services Agreement, and that was a successful, uh, uh, trip. And so we're in the process of, uh, they've provided a draft and, and we're reviewing that. Uh, as far as the, uh, SDS, we do not have a physical connection to SDS. We have a paper connection to SDS. Part of this, uh, part of this, uh, master plan, we're looking at a physical connection for multiple reasons. One of them is a short-term solution to our, uh, delivery of treated water. Uh, the second being just redundancy. But when, when we negotiated the deal on SDS, we had also negotiated a trade with the City of Colorado Springs so that, uh, they have an allocation in the Fountain Valley Authority. And so what we would, what we purchased in SDS, we actually take through FVA as part of Colorado Springs' allocation. So we don't have a physical connection, we have a paper connection, but we are receiving the full benefit of what we paid for from SDS.
Okay, thank you. That, that clears that part up about the SDS. Help me understand why we wouldn't want the Ion Exchange Plant online in the winter? And the reason I ask this, because I understand freezing water, freezing pipes, all that. It's my understanding, uh, that typical day, oh, a typical day in the wintertime is between one and a half and two million gallons a day that we can get, uh, out of that, out of that system. And that is also coincides with a typical winter day usage by the residents of Fountain. If we can get a typical day usage from the wells in the wintertime, it seems it would be cheaper for us to use that than pump it all the way up from, uh, from Pueblo.
It would, it would be marginally less, um, to operate our wells. Uh, however, uh, because of the deal that we, or the contract or the agreement we have with the Air Force, it's our responsibility to build the building that is going to protect the infrastructure, the plant itself. Uh, we have gone out to bid, we have selected a contractor, we've awarded a contract. But because, once again, because of the material situation, they're having an extremely difficult time getting steel, and it doesn't appear that we're going to be able to have a, a structure to protect the, the building at this time. The, uh, contractor for the Corps is going to do minimal protection. Um, but we're concerned because we're going to have to accept the long-term responsibility and liability of that plant, that we don't want to, um, suffer any, any potential freezing-type damages or weather-related damages. So, yes, it would be preferable to run it in the wintertime, but given the situation that we're in, i- it's not the, it, it's not, it's better to, for us in the long term to, uh, wait until the spring to start producing water out of that plant.
Thank you, Mr. Blankenship. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep. Thanks, Mr. Rick. All right, anybody else? And more to come. I mean, there's, it's a lot.
Thank you.
It's water. Thanks. Okay, we will move on to item number ten, Correspondence Comments and Exofficial Reports. Ms. Duncan, anything? Oh, no, let me start, yeah. Let me start with Mr. Trainer, sorry.
I think you're just ready to go, right to the end. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just have a quick, couple of quick items. One of them, though, while Katie is here, um, who just provided that presentation. Uh, we just were, uh, informed this week that we received a one-point-three-million-dollar grant from the Department of Local Affairs for a solar array project that we're working on, and Katie did ninety-nine-point-nine percent of the work on that grant application, did some great work, got us some money that's going to allow us to put together a solar array that will provide, um, all, a hundred percent of the energy for all of our city facilities, including the streetlights. So we're excited about that. Uh, thank you, Katie. I just wanted to give her a shout out while she was here. Pretty good deal. All right, two other quick things here. Um, wanted just to remind everyone, Community Night in the Park is still planned for September twenty-first. Of course, we'll continue to keep the COVID situation in mind and, and adjusted as needed, or as directed by our county health officials if, if need be. Right now, trunk-or-treat is planned for October twenty-ninth. And, um, after spending quite a big meeting with our, uh, police folks, decided we, from a safety standpoint, needed to go back to our no- normal trunk-or-treat event right here in front of City Hall. The normal trunk-or-treat where kids walk down and get candy from individual vehicles. Um, there, there was a number of concerns that the PD had with the huge, um, traffic lines that were blocked up and crossing, you know, two different railroad tracks and stuff like that, as you can imagine. So, as fun and as amazing as an event that that was, it was a lot of work, but that line was that was, it was huge, right? Right? I think it was like, uh, even towards the end of the event, it, it stretched all the way down to Santa Fe, so it was pretty incredible. I will be hosting yet again this year. I, I haven't missed, well, no, I did miss one year. I did was, miss one year. That was the best year ever. Um, and then last thing, Greg, I just want to say what an honor it's been to work with you as a city council member, and even more so an honor to get to know you as a human being. And I just really want to thank you for the opportunity to work with you.
All right, Mr. Evans.
You bet. Um, just to let everyone know, our, uh, from the Public Works Departments, our paving projects that have been delayed should commence this week. At least they will start. We can't tell you, as it's a day-to-day situation with the asphalt. Um, but we'll start seeing those, uh, commence this week. Um, and they will be milling, uh, Jimmy Camp on a school day between nine and two. But then they will come back on that Saturday. They'll mill it on a Friday and come back on Saturday to do the paving. So there should not be any closures or delays into the school, and Bob is coordinating that with the school. Bless us, and let's hope that that goes well. Um, the other thing is, uh, Greg passed along the same sentiments. I look forward to when you stop by, uh, stop by and see us so we can talk.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
All right, thanks. Troy?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just echo that. Uh, Greg, I think, uh, we all appreciate the, uh, the councilman that you've been for, for us as staff and, and, uh, your time here is, uh, your service to this community is, is appreciated. And not to, not to, uh, move on too quickly, but now that there, uh, you've announced that, I think the council has a couple of options, um, to, to formally declare a vacancy. Uh, the council can do that by resolution. Um, and so at the next council meeting, the, the council can declare a vacancy. And based upon the proximity to the, uh, the upcoming election, so the, the kind of the remainder of Greg's term uh, is, is too close to the general election to hold a special election for that, the vacancy. And so the council then can, can basically make the decision whether or not they want to appoint somebody for that vacancy or leave it vacant for the rest of, of the term until the new election. So you've got some choices, uh, really well, just one choice, whether or not the, the council would like to appoint somebody to fill that vacancy between now and the election, or, or just leave that seat vacant. And, um, and then, and then also what to do if, if you'd like to appoint a member of, uh, council as Mayor Pro Tem as well. So just some things to think about, um, and, uh, and so we'll, we'll have that, uh, resolution for, for next, uh, next meeting, I suppose. So, sorry to move on too quickly, Greg, but, uh, uh, that's kind of, I think, where we're at, uh, formality-wise.
Okay, so, uh, I'm just asking because I don't know, uh, the new guy can't jump into that position because I understand there's no, no election there.
I didn't follow that question, I'm sorry.
We'd have to appoint that, yeah, but you're looking at me like I don't want to do it.
Sorry, I don't, I'm not following.
The new guy.
I got it.
Could they appoint him?
Oh. Yeah, you could, you could, right, I, you certainly, you certainly could appoint that person. That would, that would make, that would make the most sense because, uh, uh, because that, that person's going to slide in anyways because there's a, it's going to be an unopposed election for that one.
Okay, I would, I would just leave it o- leave it open, uh, until November. I mean, honestly, what, I go through the rigmarole and yeah, for three meetings. Or six or eight meetings.
Only three weeks.
Huh?
Not three weeks, not three meetings. The, the gap from the appointment time to the election would only be three weeks.
Yeah, but certification doesn't happen until seven oh one on election night. Get it?
Yeah.
Okay, um, uh, but, never mind, okay. Thank you for information.
That's all that I have.
Okay, uh. Chief. Chief Heber, go ahead.
After that very complex statement, I'll try and be simple and speak simple. Uh, you know, Ms. Dietrich, I really appreciate your comments for the, uh, veterans we have in our community. I know firsthand, a lot of them are struggling with Afghanistan, as we all are, and watch that and see that unfold. A lot of people in our community, you know, lost people there were wounded, lost Afghan partners, that they put their lives at risk trying to protect that nation. So it's been difficult. Uh, I want to echo Scott. Scott sent a nice email to the city staff today, uh, this week, and I appreciate that, boss, and I know some of our veterans that, you know, really, really do. You know, it's, it's close to home. I would tell you that the military, Military Police Battalion on Fort Carson I came from, uh, went wheels up this week for a deployment in the CENTCOM AOR. So, uh, even within our community, the Military Police Battalion and a company of their soldiers are going over there to, uh, potentially help in some way. Um, so that's good. We'll keep all those soldiers and everyone in their prayers over there. And I talked to the battalion commander before she left, and it came very fast, but, you know, in the Army, that's what you're trained to do, and that's what you want to do. You want to go over there and help. Um, so they're on their way, and, and we keep them in God's, uh, God's speed and God's prayers. Uh, COVID, Mayor, comments are very good. You know, it's a personal decision. You know, I had, uh, someone on my staff that, you know, last week, uh, was not going to get a COVID vax, decided based on personal reasons to change her mind, and, uh, then unfortunately, a couple of people on my staff wanted to give that person a real hard time, which was really poor form. Um, it's a personal decision, and I addressed that, but that's just to your point of the environment we're in, and it was a personal choice. Uh, on good news, we're excited. Public Safety Department's been really, really busy, police on fire all summer. We are very much excited for Labor Day. We'll get the dinner and the dance out. We're going to go to the, uh, Aragon for the breakfast, which we haven't done for a couple of years, Pancake Breakfast, which is always a nice tradition. And then we're going to have a really great day to parade. You know, I've never been more proud of our community. I think, I don't know if Scott remembers, but seeing the parade that first year really touched me. So, you know, we're back, and that'll be good. Um, we have a good contract signed with the school district, your SRO program, that Greg, you and everyone has supported so much. You know, it's the best program in the state of Colorado. School district, man, many people were calling to defund and lower it in Denver and other communities. Uh, our contract's going to be about seven-hundred thousand dollars into the general fund for those services, which is, uh, back to regular numbers and was a hundred percent supported by the school board and everybody over there. It's such a great program. So that's exciting. I know we'll talk, uh, some budget stuff later on down the road, but, you know, Greg, I just want to thank you, as everyone will, see you on your visit, to see the men and women. You know, people want to work in Fountain, they want to be here. Uh, people from our major police department up north, to remain nameless, and a Denver P- PD kid who's an SRO, it's going to come see me tomorrow. I want to work in Fountain because of the support you guys have given them, and it counts, and it keeps our citizens safe. And I want to thank you, Greg, and just thank everybody on that. So Godspeed, my friend. That's it.
All right, thanks. Uh, I would, uh, counsel, if you get a chance, talk with, uh, John Trilch. He's been personally involved with, uh, a particular, um, Afghani who, uh, is an interpreter, who, um, is one of those, it's, it's, that, uh, they're trying to get out of there with, along with Colonel Springer, who, who, um, uh, has worked with this gentleman and his family and, um, been trying to get him. I haven't heard the latest, uh, but he shared a, some, uh, article, I think in Washington Post or, uh, about the situation and the guy, and it's just, it's just a, an example, but, I mean, it's, it's right here of people that were actually there, working hand in hand, and, um, it, was it Afghanistan you went to, Todd? So you've seen everything that's going on down there, and, and, um, so it's, it's important that, uh, we support our guys and, and ladies that were out there and, and dealing with it, and, um. So, yeah, pretty rough stuff. So thanks, Chief, for letting us know, and, and, okay, Mr. Blankenship.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, uh, Chief Heber made reference to the, to the email that, that Scott sent out on Friday, and I, I just want to say, it just, it blew me away. And that's one of the many reasons why that Fountain has the staff working for Mr. Trainer that, uh, he has, um, because it's just, uh, uh, he, he does some really phenomenal things. I've, I've worked for many city managers, uh, in, in my career, and, and, uh, uh, there's, there's very few that'll, uh, stand up to Scott Trainer. So it's an honor for me to be here and an honor for me to work for the man. Um, also, uh, I very much appreciate the, uh, the, uh, support that, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, um, that Greg, that you have, uh, shown towards, towards me and the utilities and, and this whole organization since I've been here. One, one of the projects that I know that you're, you're intimately interested in i- is the broadband, and we are working diligently. Um, our, our city attorney is sitting here in front of me and, and our, uh, tech services director, who's the project manager, and our illustrious, uh, Deputy Director of Utilities, who already left. Uh, we've, we've been working hard together to, uh, to negotiate some, some contracts that we will be bringing forward. Uh, hopefully, I, I can't say within thirty days, but probably within forty-five or sixty, that will enable us to, to see deployment of, uh, broadband, uh, in this community. And so, uh, you know, we would certainly, uh, welcome you to continue your involvement in, in that project with us. But, uh, yeah, thank you, thank you for your support, and, uh, that's all I have tonight.
All right, thanks. Uh, Ms. Lewis.
We have had, uh, some great meetings with, uh, department heads on the twenty-twenty-two budget. Um, you will, uh, be receiving notice soon of our first budget workshop, and, uh, maybe we'll be able to just have one, but, uh, that will be happening sometime in September, and, uh, I think you'll be amazed, as I have been and, um, uh, and others, that, um, you know, the department heads have done such a great job in, in really controlling costs. So we're looking forward to that. In the meantime, good luck to you, Greg. You're, you're a good man. We are going to miss you.
All right, um, Ms. Hoffman.
I did want to give council, um, a quick update that we will be postponing the Phase One of Metcalf Park upgrades, meaning the expansion of the parking area um, because of asphalt shortages. So be prepared that, um, at the beginning of next year, we will be asking for a carryover for those funds to be able to do Phase One in Metcalf, and hopefully, uh, during the same year, we'll be able to finish it out and have the new play equipment in Metcalf Park. Thank you, Tamara, for your acknowledgement of Rosa and I, we worked pretty hard, and luckily we were in it together to help each other, so I really appreciate that. And then lastly, Greg, I just want to thank you so much for your leadership and your support, and, but more than anything, I want to thank you for your friendship, so thank you so much, you will be missed.
And Ms. Rosa, did you have any?
We are starting our new bus shelters, we have five new ones, and our first one has broke ground, if you didn't see it, near Jimmy Camp and Link Road. And then our transit department is almost fully staffed, two old drivers came back, and we are interviewing a third older driver tomorrow, so.
Former.
Yeah, former.
Former drivers.
Former, for older.
She's not commenting on their age, so, okay. All right, let me quickly go through council, Ms. Duncan.
I just would like to say that we are having applications being accepted at this time for our youth council, so if you have any youth that would like to participate, our applications are online, click on the button on our city page, that's the easiest way to do that. And I would also like to say, Greg, it's been an honor to work with you, a great Christian man, to work with you. We, during COVID, my son plays bass guitar, so I let him see how, you know, even he can use his talents for the Lord, so thank you for being that example.
All right, Mr. Geek.
Greg, I'd like to thank you for all the hard work that you've done, and I really appreciate the fact that you've been through this whole thing with me, and I'm really sorry, we're going to miss you.
Mr. Applegate.
Yeah, Councilman Duncan got me thinking earlier when she was talking about the military and what was going on, and we really need to pray for the Americans that are still caught there, too. They have a deadline of the end of this month, and the Taliban won't, won't move on it, and we're already, believe it or not, taking our military out of that airport, we started today transporting the soldiers out of there, and it's just, if we don't go past the 31st, I don't know what we're going to do. The military wants to go get our people, the government's going, we don't want to know if we want to do that, they need to change their minds, so. Them and, and all the people that helped us there, pray for them, because they're in dire trouble. And I just got to the end of that, she mentioned that, and it's a serious situation for everybody. Greg, we'll miss you on here, I'll see you down at church.
All right, Ms. Estes.
I'm going to start with Chief Heber. I want to give a big shout out to the Beacon Program, it's just got off the ground, and it is making a huge impact on this community, and I couldn't be prouder. And I just, I really thank you for pushing that through, because I have a family that lives over in San Luis Valley, and I was telling them about it, and they're trying to get one over there, and I'm telling them, call you, because they'll know. San Luis Valley, give me a break. No. Alamosa. Yeah, we'll, we'll fly you there, no problem. Yeah, and then I want to give a big shout out to Greg, for my time, my short time on council with you, you have taught me a bunch about how to be an effective council member, and shown me the ropes with the Fountain Creek Watershed District, and I appreciate your mentorship, your friendship, your guidance, and I wish you all the best.
All right, Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, buckle up, I got another 45 minutes in me. No, 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 I, you know, I really appreciate the comments, and I guess the smartest thing I did was mainly just be quiet when I got nothing to say, and then say it when I do got something to say. And somehow, that gets taken for leadership, and I appreciate that, because, you know, you, you do something like this, and, and, you know, like Abe said earlier, it's a thankless task, and I saw once in a TV show where somebody said, I think it was Parks and Rec, where somebody told Leslie, nope, you can't take on a thankless task and then be mad when nobody says thank you. And if, that has been so hard to remember, when you get folks come up to you in Applebee's and tell you they didn't like something you said, or a vote you cast on a certain direction, which was only one out of seven, and everybody voted the same way, so you're like, why are you picking on me? But even that stuff is exciting, because it's exciting to know people care. So it's been so much fun watching people care for eight years, and I really appreciate all your, all your kind words, I mean, I'm on the verge of cracking, breaking up again, so, sorry about that. And if everybody could have Kleenexes ready, when I do come back to, to say personal, personal goodbyes, that'd be awesome, so I appreciate that. And, and I'm going to miss me, too, so that's.
All right, Ms. Thompson.
Oh, my goodness, once again, what am I supposed to say? You know, we kind of came on here as the Three Musketeers, and thought we'd ended as the Three Musketeers, so we'll survive, but it'll be tough, so, anyways. Anyways, I did attend, I want to let everybody know, I did attend the Fort Carson Change of Command, and it was one of the funnest change of commands I have ever been to, they're usually very serious and pomp and circumstances, but definitely some different leadership over there, and coming out, going out and coming in. And so, and I, I tell you, people just came early, they came super early and just want to talk, just want to talk, tons of retired military there, and they just want to talk at the end, and, and, you know, people are excited to get out and, and be able to get together again, and I didn't see anybody pass out this time, last time I saw three people pass out, I didn't see anybody pass out this time, so. It was a good, it was a good ceremony. And, you know, I just wanted to say something about Afghanistan, I feel a little old, I was a teenager when Saigon fell, and I saw those images on TV a little bit, and right now our kids are being overwhelmed with those images, constantly being 24 hours a day. I cannot beg parents and grandparents enough to turn off the TV. Your children do not need to see that continuous stream of what is going on over there, it just fills their minds and their imaginations, and we need to protect them, their minds as we can. They're going to have those children coming into their classrooms, they're going to need to be welcoming those children into those classrooms, those children are going to have situations they've dealt with that we have no idea what they're dealing with and have dealt with, having seen some of those children and been involved with them when they came from Saigon, it's very different. We need to be prepared emotionally and mentally as a community. We need to be prepared to help them, but with what they need help with. I, I remember people filling up apartments with twin bed, bunk beds, because we thought that was the most wonderful thing you do, you got a family of five kids coming in, you go out and buy bunk beds and buy new mattresses, we walk in the next day and they're all sleeping on the floor. So we need to be conscious of what their cultural needs are and what they're coming, we're going to have a lot of different languages coming here, in heavens, we have Fort Carson, I think we can probably dip into with some of the language interpretations we're going to need, but please, I cannot beg you enough, just like when 9/11 happened, turn off the TV, don't discuss it in front of your children, be very conscientious of your conversations. The kids need to know that it's an event that's happening, yes, but life is going to go on, and you're going to be okay, mom and dad are here, they love you, we're going to pray for those people, but we're not going to talk about it and discuss it and watch it on TV all day long, so please, protect your children's minds during this time. And that's my speech for the night.
Okay, I don't have anything to close out tonight, you know, but we're good, and, you know, again, I kind of spoke a little bit, but I do appreciate all the work you have here, and, you know, all that stuff that, you know, when we, when we came up here in this, in my new role and everybody, we, we were in a bad way, and I think we really worked hard, despite differences, despite beliefs and things like that, to make things, and you were part of that as well, and so I, I could have said, hey, guys, let's, let's do this, it still was dependent upon each and every one of us to, to pitch in, so thank you for being willing and, and understanding what the, the bigger goal was, and that we truly did it, I think, for the community and not for ourselves, so thank you. With that, we do have executive session, Ms. Huffman.
We do, I'd like to request an executive session pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-424 for the purpose of review, approval, and amendment of executive session minutes, and pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-424 for the purpose of discussing a personnel matter and not involving any specific employees who have requested discussion of the matter in open session, any member of this body or any elected official, the appointment of any person to fill an office of this body, or of an elected official, or personnel policies that do not require the discussion of matters personal to particular employees. Let me reiterate, that is CRS Section 24-6-424F. Do you need a motion?
We do need a motion. Mayor Pro Tem.
Move to, go into executive session as requested.
And Mr. Geek.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion of second for approval. Please vote.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Okay, we will reconvene in executive in about four minutes.